Can I have a motion to return to public session?
Make that motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation on agenda items only. Each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name for the rec-- excuse me, for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public participation. There will be, there's no principal's report tonight. Are there any committee reports?
I have a committee report.
Go ahead.
The Special Education Committee Subcommittee met on August fifteenth. The Subcommittee discussed staffing for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The Subcommittee also discussed unique, which is a program that will be introduced to their curriculum this year for self-contained classrooms. Staff will be trained on how to effectively use this program during staff training days and the opening days of school. That's it.
Thank you.
I also have a committee report.
Okay.
The Tech Committee meeting took place this past Friday, August twenty-third. The Tech Department has been busy all summer preparing for the beginning of the new school year. District Directors and the Principals will be receiving iPads so they will be able to update their schools' websites with valuable information. And the district website will be getting a refresh soon. Also, the loner laptops are currently being distributed to staff as well as middle school and high school students. And all new staff will be trained in Genesis in preparation of meeting students in September. And this was the last meeting with our current Director of Technology as he will be leaving the district next month. We wish him luck in his new endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I will close the committee reports. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to welcome everyone back. Right now, we're currently going through new teacher orientation. I will have more details at our next board meeting and more information. On behalf of our new hires and our non-tenured, they would like to say thank you and for all the support and they look forward to serving our community. With that said, my report will be presented by Ms. Bodak, who will present the state assessment results for access scores. Thank you.
Good evening. Board of Education members, if you'd like to take a seat in the front or just turn around. I'm Colleen Bodak, the Director of Guidance and State Testing for the school district. I am going to go over the access scores for ELLs, so that's English Language Learners. We had two-hundred-and-thirty-six students take the access for ELLs assessment this past spring. And those students were assessed in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, writing, oral language, literacy, and comprehension. And proficiency levels are determined based on the student's scores in each of those tested areas that I mentioned. It's going the wrong way. Okay, and students who've received an overall score of a four-point-five or greater meet eligibility criteria to exit the program. On the next slide, you will see, I keep going the wrong way, I'm sorry. We had twenty-four students exit this year. You can see the breakdown of experience in the program. So, last year, we had seventy-five students who were new to the country and in program for less than one year, sixty-eight in the program for one year, thirty-one in the program for two years, and forty-seven for three or more years. Students whose parents refused for them to be in the program but they were found eligible also were required to test and we had less than ten students and suppression guidelines prevent me from saying the exact number there. Again, we had twenty-four students exit the program through this test. Okay, on this slide, you can see an overview of the number of students in the multilingual program by school and by experience. So, for LDN, we had the highest number of newly arrived students at twenty-three. And then you can look at the table for the rest of the numbers. You can also see that Sherman had the highest number of students exiting with seventeen students exiting. And the other schools, suppression guidelines prohibit me from sharing those numbers. Okay, so, state requirements indicate that we have to do a comparison of scores year over year. So, you can see the twenty-twenty-three results on the first, in the first column and the twenty-twenty-four results in the second column. And it keeps going like that by level across the table. So, for instance, if you look at the top-left corner, we have kindergarteners. Last year, our Level One students, those were the newly arrived, were forty-six as compared to forty-six percent this year, which isn't necessarily indicative of anything except for we have a similar number of newly arrived students coming this year as we did last year. If you go along the table, you can see the rest of the comparisons and make inferences from there. Okay, and now we have, oh, we just skipped over, yeah. That's the middle and high school comparisons as well. And this is going to be posted on the website for people who are interested in looking at this data more deeply. Next slide, please. Yeah, go back two more? Oh, okay, go forward, sorry about that. Okay, so notable achievements, thirty percent of our students that were enrolled in the multilingual program at Sherman met exit criteria and were able to exit the program through this assessment. Next slide, please. And some of the intervention strategies that we're putting into place for this year to improve our scores. One, the district expanded our administration to include a supervisor of ESL. This is also the administrator that is going to be in charge of the preschool program. We're going to have individualized multilingual plans for all students that are in program. English language classes will continue to focus on both academic language and conversational skills that are in line with state standards. Access score reports, so the individual score reports for each student who took this test are now available to all teachers with a click of a button on Genesis. So, before, the teachers might have had to talk to the ESL teacher or talk to the counselor to get the score report. Now, with just a click of a button, they can see the areas of strength and weaknesses for their multilingual learners and can adjust as needed. And we're going to provide increased opportunities for students to demonstrate proficiency through the WEDA model assessment. So, the WEDA model assessment is another assessment that can be given to students to meet exit criteria. Previously, the only opportunity to meet exit criteria was through this access test. And we'll continue to provide professional development opportunities for our staff to support our multilingual learners. Next slide, please. And we, last year, we introduced sheltered language instruction for our staff at the high school and some other schools for professional development and we're going to continue to explore those professional development opportunities for our staff. Next one. Okay, for some reason, I'm missing the subgroup data on the presentation right here, but it will be included in the presentation that's on the website. And that just covers subgroup data by program. So, that would include special education students, students on free and reduced lunch, as well as comparisons by race as well. And if anybody has any questions after this is posted on the website and they have a
Can I have a motion to return to public session?
Make that motion.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation on agenda items only. Each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name for the rec-- excuse me, for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public participation. There will be-- there's no principals report tonight. Are there any committee reports?
I have a committee report.
Go ahead.
The Special Education Committee Subcommittee met on August fifteenth. The Subcommittee discussed staffing for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The Subcommittee also discussed UNIC, which is a program that will be introduced to their curriculum this year for self-contained classrooms. Staff will be trained on how to effectively use this program during staff training days and the opening days of school. That's it.
Thank you.
I also have a committee report.
Okay.
The Tech Committee meeting took place this past Friday, August twenty-third. The Tech Department has been busy all summer preparing for the beginning of the new school year. District Directors and the Principals will be receiving iPads so they will be able to update their school's websites with valuable information. And the district website will be getting a refresh soon. Also, the loner laptops are currently being distributed to staff as well as middle school and high school students. And all new staff will be trained in Genesis in preparation of meeting students in September. And this was the last meeting with our current Director of Technology as he will be leaving the district next month. We wish him luck in his new endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I will close the committee reports. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to welcome everyone back. Right now, we're currently going through new teacher orientation. I will have more details at our next board meeting and more information. On behalf of our new hires and our non-tenured, they would like to say thank you and for all the support, and they look forward to serving our community. With that said, my report will be presented by Ms. Bodak, who will present the state assessment results for access scores. Thank you.
Good evening. Board of Education members, if you'd like to take a seat in the front or just turn around. I'm Colleen Bodak, the Director of Guidance and State Testing for the school district. I am going to go over the access scores for ELLs, so that's English language learners. We had two-hundred-and-thirty-six students take the Access for ELLs assessment this past spring, and those students were assessed in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, writing, oral language, literacy, and comprehension. And proficiency levels are determined based on the student's scores in each of those tested areas that I mentioned. It's going the wrong way. Okay, and students who receive an overall score of a four-point-five or greater meet eligibility criteria to exit the program. On the next slide, you will see-- I keep going the wrong way, I'm sorry. We had twenty-four students exit this year. You can see the breakdown of experience in the program. So, last year, we had seventy-five students who were new to the country and in program for less than one year, sixty-eight in the program for one year, thirty-one in the program for two years, and forty-seven for three or more years. Students whose parents refused for them to be in the program but they were found eligible also were required to test, and we had less than ten students. And suppression guidelines prevent me from saying the exact number there. Again, we had twenty-four students exit the program through this test. Okay, on this slide, you can see an overview of the number of students in the multilingual program by school and by experience. So, for ALDEAN, we had the highest number of newly arrived students at twenty-three. And then you can look at the table for the rest of the numbers. You can also see that Sherman had the highest number of students exiting, with seventeen students exiting. And the other schools, suppression guidelines prohibit me from sharing those numbers. Okay, so state requirements indicate that we have to do a comparison of scores year over year. So, you can see the twenty-twenty-three results on the first column and the twenty-twenty-four results in the second column. And it keeps going like that by level across the table. So, for instance, if you look at the top-left corner, we have kindergarteners. Last year, our Level One students, those were the newly arrived, were forty-six as compared to forty-six percent this year, which isn't necessarily indicative of anything except for we have a similar number of newly arrived students coming this year as we did last year. If you go along the table, you can see the rest of the comparisons and make inferences from there. Okay, and now we have-- oh, we just skipped over-- yeah, that's the middle and high school comparisons as well. And this is going to be posted on the website for people who are interested in looking at this data more deeply. Next slide, please. Yeah, go back two more? Oh, okay, go forward, sorry about that. Okay, so notable achievements, thirty percent of our students that were enrolled in the multilingual program at Sherman met exit criteria and were able to exit the program through this assessment. Next slide, please. And some of the intervention strategies that we're putting into place for this year to improve our scores. One, the district expanded our administration to include a supervisor of ESL. This is also the administrator that is going to be in charge of the preschool program. We're going to have individualized multilingual plans for all students that are in program. English language classes will continue to focus on both academic language and conversational skills that are in line with state standards. Access score reports, so the individual score reports for each student who took this test are now available to all teachers with a click of a button on Genesis. So, before the teachers might have had to talk to the ESL teacher or talk to the counselor to get the score report, now with just a click of a button, they can see the areas of strength and weaknesses for their multilingual learners and can adjust as needed. And we're going to provide increased opportunities for students to demonstrate proficiency through the WEADA model assessment. So, the WEADA model assessment is another assessment that can be given to students to meet exit criteria. Previously, the only opportunity to meet exit criteria was through this access test. And we'll continue to provide professional development opportunities for our staff to support our multilingual learners. Next slide, please. And we-- last year, we introduced sheltered language instruction for our staff at the high school and some other schools for professional development, and we're going to continue to explore those professional development opportunities for our staff. Next one. Okay, for some reason, I'm missing the subgroup data on the presentation right here, but it will be included in the presentation that's on the website. And that just covers subgroup data by program. So, that would include special education students, students on free and reduced lunch, as well as comparisons by race as well. And if anybody has any questions after this is posted on the website and they have a look at it, they can reach out to me regarding test administration questions, to Ms. Gois regarding the multilingual program, or to Mr. Salvo regarding curriculum instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume that concludes the superintendent's report? Thank you. Okay, policies, agenda items one. Number one, district policies, second reading. And the personnel-- we're going to vote on this together-- personnel, agenda items two through thirty-nine, and addendum one. Number two, staff appointments. Number three, staff resignations. Number four, paraprofessional hiring. Number five, compensation pay, professional development. Number six, medical leave. Number seven, disability retirement. Number eight, maternity leave. Number nine, employment contract. Number ten, change of assignment transfer. Eleven, additional responsibilities and stipends. Twelve, middle school extracurricular advisors, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Thirteen, middle school additional classes for teachers for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Live streaming-- number fourteen, live streaming producer. Number fifteen, additional staff extended school year program. Number sixteen, athletic coaches for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five year. Seventeen, additional HIT program substitutes. Number eighteen, high school and middle school athletic proctors, site managers for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Nineteen, middle school activities and chaperones. Twenty, middle school after-school detention proctors. Twenty-one, middle school athletic proctors. Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school breakfast proctors. Twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five lunch proctors. Twenty-- twenty-four, middle school female locker room supervision. Twenty-five, district substitutes for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-six, district organizational chart. Twenty-seven, King University intern agreement. Twenty-eight, summer camp staff. Twenty-nine, high school additional classes for twenty-- did I just say twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five? The agenda says twenty-twenty-four, twenty-- I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, but it's twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. So, number twenty-nine should read, "High School Additional Classes for Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Twenty-Five." Thirty, High School Extracurricular Activities. Thirty-one, behavioralist monitoring for twenty-twenty-four-- I'm sorry, mentoring for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Thirty-two, mentoring program for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Thirty-three, curriculum writing. Thirty-four, instructional support stipends. Thirty-five, job descriptions. Thirty-six, paraprofessional placements, elementary and secondary.
And Mr. President, before a motion on that, just to note that the board here at the table has some typographical revisions to three D and L and a correction to twenty-five. That was established in executive session.
Okay, thank you. Thirty-seven, paraprofessional assignments preschool. Thirty-eight, administrative substitute. Thirty-nine, ten-month secretary. Can a-- can I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. And addenda under personnel, additional staff appointments under number one. So, can I have a-- an approval of person-- of the personnel section and also addendum item number one and policy agenda item one? Roll call, please? Oh, sorry, go ahead, motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Vice President Constance Quintella.
Yes, but I recuse myself from number thirty-seven.
Susan Carlstrom.
Yes.
Cindy Mago.
Yes.
Jennifer McCarr.
Yes.
Chris Monroe.
Yes.
Michael Ann Regan.
Yes.
President Paul Baimonte.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Education, agenda items forty through forty-six. Number forty, twenty-twenty-- sorry, twenty-twenty-four extended school year tuition and transportation. Forty-one, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year tuition and transportation. Forty-two, tuition rates. Forty-three, curriculum reading adoption. Forty-four, conference attendance requests, professional growth. Forty-five, twenty-twenty-four-- twenty-twenty-four Union County STEM Educational Grant Award. Twenty-- sorry, number forty-six, Staff Development Workshop. Approval of edu-- can I have approval for the educational section? Have a motion, please? You have a second? Roll call, please?
Vice President Constance Quintella.
Yes.
Susan Carlstrom.
Yes.
Cindy Mago.
Yes.
Jennifer McCarr. Chris Monroe.
Yes.
Michael Ann Regan. President Paul Baimonte.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Business and addenda items two, three, and four. Agenda items forty-seven through sixty. Number forty-seven, monthly certification. Forty-eight, approval of bills. Forty-nine, approval of minutes. Fifty, Secretary Treasurer's Report. Fifty-one, use of building and grounds. Fifty-two, district contracts and agreement. Fifty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five food service contract renewal. Number fifty-four, donations. Fifty-five, approval for upgrades at the Roseville Park Schools. Fifty-six, professional service contract, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Fifty-seven, professional service contract, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five addendum. Fifty-eight, Resolution for New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. Fifty-nine, service agreement Discovery Child Care Center. Sixty, Comprehensive Equity Plan. Sixty-one, Work-Family Connection. Under addenda items for business, number two, additional use of buildings and grounds. And number three, approval of bills. Number four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five monthly tuition rate, Roseville Park Preschool Before Care. Can I have a motion to approve the business section?
Make that motion.
You have a second? Roll call, please?
Vice President Constance Quintella.
Yes, with an abstention to fifty-one F.
Susan Carlstrom.
Yes.
Cindy Mago.
Yes, with an abstention on fifty-one F.
Jennifer McCarr.
Yes.
Chris Monroe.
Yes, with abstention of fifty-one C.
Michael Ann Regan.
Yes, with an abstention from fifty-one C.
President Paul Baimonte.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Is there any continuing business? See? Seeing none, any new business?
I just wanted to acknowledge one of our assistant principals, vice principals, and also our new A.D. that will be coming into the high school who is here today, Mr. Peter Kane. Welcome. We're very excited to have you. If you want to say a few words, we just wanted to say congratulations and thank you for joining our family.
No pressure.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Gois, Principal Costa, and Vice Principal Foy for your support and consideration in this new, exciting opportunity as the Assistant Principal of Athletics here at Roseville Park High School. Having spent my whole life in Union County as a student athlete and a teacher and a coach, I know of the rich history of the town's athletic programs and the pride that its town takes in their athletic programs. I believe that athletics are an extension of the classroom, and the experience gained through them helps shape the lives of the young people that play them. Know that I will work tirelessly to support our students, our student athletes, our teachers, and our coaches as I work with the Roseville Park High School administration, and I'm humbled and honored to be given this amazing opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck. Any other new business?
So, ALDEAN is welcoming our new principal tomorrow at a back-to-school bash from three to four-thirty. We're very excited to have Mr. Riggy there and for all our new parents to come meet him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the public participation. Each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Frank Gagnierato. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to come up tonight and say about-- to the parents, to the board, please, it's a brand-new year. Join your PTAs, join your PTOs. Board members, please, go to your meetings. I know it's an election year, and some people are going to be moving in, moving out, but it's very important for you guys to attend the meetings so that you can report here to anybody that cannot make the meetings at the school. Just, it's important to the kids and to the school district, just for everybody to be involved. So, please, join your PTAs or PTOs of all the schools that you can. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Frank. Anyone else?
Zian Fonte. Good evening, Superintendent Gois, former board colleagues, and our community of Roseville Park. I begin by thanking Ms. Bodak for her report and giving us a sense of the progress being made for our English language learners. Isn't it incredible to see the work our district has been doing to empower and educate them? It's a gift to have such a diverse range of students, voices, and perspectives in our hallway. Thank you again, Ms. Bodak. In addition to-- in addition, all the best to Chris Hyde and his family. Thank you for your service in Roseville Park. When it comes to the days ahead, it is an exciting and somewhat stressful moment for our families, indeed. The school is about to begin. Students are filled with butterflies, possibility, and hope for a successful year ahead. It's incredible what this district has managed to accomplish to get us to this point. So, a huge thank you to Ms. Gois and your remarkable staff and teams of-- team of educators. One can tell from the length of this evening's agenda that much is on the horizon. While there are many beloved, familiar faces, we have some new principals, new teachers, new staff, and new families entering our district for their first academic year. No matter how long we lived in town, what school we went to, what job we hold, making sure our students are all afforded an equitable opportunity for an enriching learning experience is a top priority for us all. We're all in place-- we're all in a place of beginning. So, I hope, as I stand before you, that it's clear I believe we have more alike than what separates us. Unity begins when we open those doors on day one and invite our students to express their greatest potential. When it comes to the agenda, I'm intrigued to see that the candidates' night is on the agenda, as I, a candidate, have not been asked about my availability. However, I'm looking forward to a live streaming event being available, I suspect, through the district website. Perhaps clarity can be made at that September meeting. As the event moves closer, I will be sure to emphasize the elevation of awareness for our community and evidence-based decision-making as format and structure are negotiated amongst the evening's organizers and candidates. I hope that our students have a fabulous first day of school and that our staff and educators find those little moments throughout that first day to see how valued and loved they truly are. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? I will close the public participation. Just going to take a minute to wish everyone good luck from the superintendent, business administrator, staff, principals, vice principals, new-- newly appointed principals, students, parents, Board of Education members. Good luck for the upcoming year. I think there are-- like Zach said, there's a lot of stuff on the horizon. There's a lot of good things happening. We sat in that meeting today for a half hour long, and I apologize because there's a lot of stuff being orchestrated and a lot of positive things. So, we just want to make sure that we continue a progress forward. With that said, the next scheduled board meeting will be an open session held on Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, at seven P.M. The board meeting will be held in the Roseville Park High School auditorium. Can I have a motion for adjournment? Who's that? That was Jen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.